... telephone and so, once we're officially convened, I'll ask for a volunteer or nomination to be acting chairman tonight.
Loretto, give me thirty seconds, I want to put the recording on.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. This is Loretto Cowing, the chairman, participating by telephone, and I officially call the meeting to order. Mr. Hoffman, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Loretta Cowing.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yeah.
Chip Roarke.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Victor Navarez.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks is absent. Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Dave Robinson is absent. He did let me know today he wasn't going to be able to make it, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. As you all know, I'm participating by telephone and I think that puts me at something of a disadvantage in terms of sharing the meeting because I can't see what's going on. Do we have any volunteers to be acting chairman tonight, or would anyone care to nominate somebody to be acting chairman?
Chip says he will do it. Anybody want to second that?
I'll say it.
Everybody raise their hand.
Okay. By consensus, Mr. Roarke is the acting chairman. Thank you very much. Okay, Chip, take it away.
All right. So, we have a quorum?
Yes.
We do.
And, um, do we have, does anyone have any comments on the minutes? Are they ready to approve? Second.
I'll second it.
Baker?
I'm on.
I oppose. Thank you. Communications?
We did not have anything not related to any of the cases tonight.
City Council action?
Yes, the City Council approved at their March 1st meeting the zoning text amendments to incorporate the design guidelines into the zoning ordinance and to add the site plan review process. Um, they, no action has been taken on the suggested alley vacation at 150 East Station Street yet. The, I heard last week, I believe it was, that the owner is still going to be trying to reach out to the Alderman of that area and some of the property owners to see if they can reach some solution that's amenable to everybody, so, that's still in the works.
I see by the agenda we have no unfinished business, uh, new business. Uh, case number PB 2021-2-1, a request by the city of Cankey for several things. Mike, could you fill us in on that?
I sure can. So, the request is actually two pieces. One is for a rezoning of the property at 540 East Chestnut from R1 to C2, and the other is a conditional use for government facilities at 294 North Harrison Avenue. Um, as most of you probably have heard or read in the press or whatnot, the city acquired what's commonly known as the Bull property down here, just down the street from where we're at right now, uh, and intends to use that for, uh, headquarters for the, um, the utility that the city operates, as well as for the code apartment. Uh, it's a good central location, it's near all the other governmental cities, facilities in town, um, and, um, the, the city really had some, some need to do something like this, and they were debating, um, possibly building a new facility or those kind of things, but those are all real expensive options. When this became available, it seemed like a good solution, so, uh, the city has acquired the property, uh, per the code, for a governmental service use like this, and it does require a conditional use, so, uh, the city needs to follow our own rules with zoning, so, we are here tonight to consider a conditional use for this property. When we looked at it, uh, that one parcel, um, that is at 540 East Chestnut, it's a vacant lot, actually. Mine probably was a home at one time, I suspect. Uh, it is zoned R1, but it's a vacant lot right now. Uh, it makes sense, really, for this entire campus that's owned by the city to be, have the same base zoning, so, we're suggesting to rezone that one lot from R1 to C2 to be consistent with the adjacent properties, and then to grant the conditional use for the entire, uh, facility and campus there, so that the city can operate, um, the ESU headquarters and, uh, have space for code enforcement and those kind of things.
Mr. Hoffman, can you double print this packet?
I do.
My, uh, printer goes, goes back to page one.
And, so everybody knows, um, we do have a court reporter for this, uh, they're actually watching it live on television, so, uh, when you guys are speaking, if you could make sure you speak into your mic so it picks up well, that would be great. Thanks.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How many buildings are there right now that these, uh, that's going to be going into this?
So, the city actually demolished one of the small structures, I believe there's two on the site that are going to be remaining. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, Barry, I think that's the case.
Code, you said, is going to be, you know, going into it, uh, and where is that currently?
Uh, it's out at the Space Center. Off of Hobby.
Uh, how many buildings are there besides that that, where, do we own all of them, or do we?
Yeah, you can see that there's a map included in your packet of, uh, properties, and it's actually, you know, there, there's properties that, that front, there's a building that fronts on Indiana, uh, and then there's another structure that more or less fronts onto Chestnut, it's connected-
The ones right now that are existing-
Yeah.
That will be going into this property.
Yeah, what we're doing is basically reusing the existing buildings, so, we're not, we're not adding any new structures to the site.
No, I understand. So, they're going to be moving from existing places-
Right.
Into this building.
Right.
Where are these other, uh, buildings at, where are they located?
Oh, well, ESU and code both operate out of the Space Center property right now, that the city leases, currently, and will own this. That lease expires in a couple of years, so they're going to need to move out, uh, and they were starting to plan for alternatives anyway, when this property became available.
Are there any other comments from the commissioners? Is there anyone in the audience that wants to make a comment? Are we ready to act?
Formally, I think, Chip, you should close the public hearing and then-
Oh, I can, and, so, we're closing the conference room. We're finished, and now, uh, we're ready to act on this.
And I would suggest taking the rezoning of the lot initially first, and then do the conditional use second, because it includes both this lot and the other properties.
The rezoning has to go to City Council?
Yes. Both, both items will have to go to City Council, both the conditional-
Can we go ahead and recommend the conditional use permit without them approving it?
Without them approving the rezoning?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I mean, in, in theory, if you don't approve the rezoning, uh, the conditional use would just apply to the, all, all the other parcels except that one, so you-
Okay.
Could do them separately if you, for some reason wanted to.
Okay. But you would prefer that we did them as one action?
I know, I'd prefer two actions, one, uh, vote on the zoning, and then-
All right.
The rezoning, and then a separate vote on the conditional use.
All right, that thing, I'll read it back. Deb Terrell, I would, uh, like to recommend to City Council that we approve the zoning map amendment in case PB 2021-2-1, uh, to amend, uh, C2 property at 540 Chestnut to an R1, and I would like to attach the findings as recommended by the planning office. For clarification, can you say from R1 to C2? No, from C2 to R1, did I say it backwards?
No, it, it is from R1 to C2.
Okay. Right, right, to C2. Now I'm all confused. I second.
Tell the roll on this.
Deb Terrell.
Yeah.
Chip Roarke.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Victor Navarez.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Loretta Cowing.
Yes.
That is approved, and we'll move forward to the City Council.
The next case is PB 2021-2-2A, the request by the city of Cankey to amend the zoning ordinance to allow-
Wait, 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 Chip, we got to vote on the conditional use, sorry, for the governance, government service facility.
It's, I guess, the second part of PB 2-
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for backing me, I appreciate that. Okay, can you make a motion on that? Is there anyone who wants to make a motion on that?
Uh, yes.
I'll second that.
Uh, Deb Terrell here, I would like to propose that we recommend approval of a conditional use for a government facility at 295 North Harrison in case PB 2021-21, and I would also like to attach the findings as presented by the planning department. Second.
Okay.
Make a motion. Okay, Victor.
Well, Victor seconded earlier, I think, so, I think we'll go with that one, if that's okay. I know that it really matters much, but-
Yeah, we're all-
We can. Um, Chip Roarke.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yeah.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Victor Navarez.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Loretta Cowing.
Yes.
All right, that also is recommended for approval, and we'll move on to the City Council.
Okay. Now, case PB 2021-2-2A, the request by the city of Cankey to amend the zoning ordinance to allow residential use above the first floor in C1 and C2 zoning districts as a conditional use. Mr. Hoffman, can you all this with that?
I can, so, 2A and 2B, as you might guess by the numbering, are related, uh, but they are separate, so, we're considering the city as the applicant on 2A, and Duncan Homes or Duncan Properties is the applicant on 2B. Um, essentially, we have lots of properties around this community that, uh, have or had residential units, uh, above the first floor, um, in C1 and C2 districts. Right now, those are all either illegal because they've been vacant for a long time, or legal nonconforming, meaning they're allowed to remain, but if something happened to the structure, they would no longer be able to be rebuilt as it is. Um, particularly in locations near downtown, but really in, in most places in the community, um, you know, it's kind of a traditional character, the fabric of the community, and if done properly, meaning you've got adequate parking and you have, you know, adequate ventilation and all the building code and the things, the things that are done right for those things, really, I don't think is very problematic, so, we're, from a staff perspective, proposing that we allow those residential uses above the first floor in both the C1 and the C2 district, uh, as a conditional use. So, there may be a situation where it doesn't make sense, maybe there's no space for parking, um, maybe it's just a, a location that really doesn't make sense for people to live, um, and that might be the case, and, and which case, we will be able to review it through the conditional use process and determine that. Um, but in other cases, it may make perfect sense, and in fact, it'll allow some structures to, to fit what they were actually built for. So, so, we're suggesting to amend the code to allow them as a conditional use on upper stories only, you still can't do it on the ground floor, as we're proposing it. This, uh, require, this option to do it as a conditional use above the first floor is currently in place in your downtown C3 district, we're suggesting expanding it to both C1s and C2s. Um, that'll allow, um, removal of a lot of nonconforming things, if they come in and get the conditional use, it'll allow additional options for, for housing in the community that is relatively affordable, uh, and it will, uh, really better match the, the stock of structures you have in the community. So, uh, we're suggesting that's appropriate, but would be more than happy to entertain any questions or concerns that you have about that.
Comments from commissioners?
This, uh, subject was brought up some years ago when the, uh, little building was on, I believe at that time it was the A-Rac Auto Sales in Washington and Station Street. Uh, whoever owned that lot at the time wanted a conditional use permitted for a family to live above the sales floor, and we turned it down at the time, and I believe one of the strong, uh, arguments against it that we heard from the public-
Public.
Was that there was no safe place for children to fly, that a family living in such a situation like that would be unsafe. Uh, is that something that we would consider when offering the CUP, or, we can't really attach condition about the age of the occupants?
No, you can't.
So, how, how would that be handled?
Um, I think it is something you could consider in a particular case, and you have to think about, you know, the market and, and who's going to be looking to rent a location, so, you know, in some of your more urban locations, if you will, uh, you may be more likely to be attracting the singles, or, or maybe a newly married couple without kids, or something like that, or there might be a park right next door or something, and in which case, it's fine. Uh, there may be other situations where it's a location that just screams families, uh, and maybe it doesn't make sense, so I think that's the benefit of having those conditional uses, you can weigh those factors. You're absolutely right, we can't condition who can live in the unit, that's illegal, um, but you can take into consideration the market and what's likely to happen in that area in your decision.
Is there any comments from the audience?
Mr. Chairman, uh, my name is Dave Barron, I'm a resident of 715 Park Place in Cankey Key. Uh, I am here tonight on behalf of Duncan Homes, who is the applicant, in the issue that's coming before you next, um, but wanted to get up as, uh, not only a resident, but the attorney, um, as well as somebody who's involved in a number of different housing efforts in the city of Cankey Key, uh, through the Cankey Development Corporation and issues downtown, where we, we really are pushing to greater residentiality, um, the ability to have mixed-use spaces, a number of other neighborhood housing initiatives, too, um, just to, to speak in, in favor of this amendment that would allow for more options, more affordable options, as well as more creative options in terms of housing. Mixed use is a trend that we're seeing across the country, and this would at least allow us to do that in a regulated way, because, again, we still have to come before this board for any sort of conditional use permit, which is what we are about to do in a couple seconds here, uh, so, just wanted to get up and speak in favor of these, these changes.
I'm remiss in asking, Mike, a baby's sworn in, is enough?
He's an attorney, so I don't know.
So, so that's nothing to worry about?
Uh, well, let's just do it anyway, just to be on the safe side. Do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now it's closed. Are we ready to move?
So, are we doing this in 2A and 2B?
Yes, so we'd be looking for a motion to recommend the text change of the zoning ordinance to allow, uh, residential use above the first floor in C1 and C2. And, if you really wanted to, if you see a difference between C1 and C2, and you wanted to treat those separately, I suppose you could, if you're comfortable doing them together, you could do them together.
I would prefer that we did them separately because I have concerns about the specific property.
Well, we won't be talking about the Duncan Homes property on West, that's, that's not a part of this. This is just a question of whether we want to change the code to allow the consideration of a conditional use for residential above the first floor in C1 and C2. This is just the, the, the change to the zoning ordinance itself, not any specific conditional use.
Okay. So, 2 and 2A are for C1 and C2?
2A is the change to the ordinance, 2B is the specific conditional use for Duncan Homes at 257 Southwest Avenue. What we're talking about right now would be, um, 2021-2-2A.
Okay. So, I move that we recommend approval of case number PB 2021-2-2, the text amendment to the city's zoning ordinance to allow as a conditional use residential only use above the ground floor, buildings on C1, they're for commercial and C2 service.
They're second. Call the roll, please.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Victor Navarez.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yeah.
Chip Roarke.
Yes.
Loretta Cowing.
Yes.
Okay, that recommendation is made to the City Council?
Next case is PB 2021-2-2B, the request by Duncan Homes for a conditional use to allow residential use on the second floor at 257 Southwest Avenue.
So, any decision that we make regarding this specific property is dependent on what the City Council decides to do?
I think it would be a very appropriate condition if you wanted to recommend approval to, say, dependent on the city approving that rezoning, yes, absolutely, that'd be-
Is the understanding with the current owner?
Yep, I think they understand, but, that's okay.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Well, so, Chip, we do have the applicant, so you maybe want to give them a chance to-
Yeah, first, very good, very good.
Present the case.
The applicant, do you want to speak with us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm not sure if, if we need to swear in all three of us, actually, but, um, I am Dave Barron, I'm the attorney on behalf of Duncan Homes, um, could my fellow associates have already introduced themselves?
Kurt Wateki, I'm with Duncan Homes.
I'm Claire Chulinski, um, I'm the attorney for the sellers of this property, the current owners.
So, let's do this as a group. Uh, anyone that plans on speaking on this case, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as you find out in a minute, Duncan Homes is under contract to purchase the property at 257 Southwest Avenue, uh, we are the applicant, Duncan Homes is, uh, Mr. Chulinski represents the current owner, and can provide some insight, uh, information about the history of the building, a little bit more so than, than we might be able to, uh, but for the most part, uh, Mr. Wateki and I will be able to present, uh, our basis for the application. Uh, Mr. Wateki, could you state your address?
1369 Westminster Bourbon Avenue, Illinois.
And are you familiar with Duncan Homes?
Yes, sir.
How's that?
I'm a project manager.
What does that entail?
Well, I handle, uh, day-to-day operations of our re, uh, our remodels and also the property management.
And are you familiar with the property at 257 West, Southwest Avenue in Cankey Key?
Yes, sir.
And you, uh, you're here today to speak on behalf of Duncan Homes in seeking a conditional use permit for residential use on the second floor of that property?
I am.
Now, that property is currently zoned C2, correct?
Correct.
Uh, could you describe that property, just sort of, tell me, really?
We have, uh, some apartments on the second floor, the first floor has, uh, four industrial type condos.
Okay, so the, let's start with the first floor, you say that there are four industrial style condos?
Yes, sir.
Are they currently being used?
No, sir.
When was the last time they were used?
I don't know that.
Do you know by whom they were last used?
M&amp;M Sheet Now.
And, but they have since moved out of that location?
Yes.
And, on the second floor, how, could you describe the, the apartments that you mentioned?
Um, yeah, they're just s- small apartments on the second floor.
And, are each of those apartments currently, uh, inhabited?
They are.
And have they been inhabited for as long as you've been familiar with the property?
They have.
And each of those dwellings has its own mailing address, is that right?
I believe so.
Okay. Uh, could you describe the, the general neighborhood of the building?
Uh, it's, it's five-star wings, right, it's right down the street, uh, Tiny Taps next door to it, uh, or just a block or two over from what we would consider downtown area, right?
Excuse me, Mr. Wateki, if you could speak in the microphone, so people-
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm not here to hear you, thanks.
And, isn't the case that, um, across the alley to the west, there are a number of residential, uh, dwellings in that location?
Yes.
So, it is a, it is a mixed-use area currently?
Absolutely.
Of both commercial and residential uses?
Yes.
Now, you are seeking to purchase the property, what's your intended use for this property if you do purchase it?
So, intended use would be similar to what it is now, you see, uh, individual tenants probably on the first floor in the separate condos that leave M&amp;M, use it all as one, uh, and then to maintain the apartments above it.
So, the first floor would remain a commercial use?
Yes.
Okay, so your, your intention is to, essentially, just maintain a continuation of what's been going on there, uh, as is going on right now, and as, as far back as you can recall for the use of the property, right?
It is.
You do intend to bring in commercial tenants to those, uh, to make sure that they're all over vacant as well?
We do.
Uh, do you see any impact, a negative impact on the neighbors by your intended use?
No.
Uh, is that driven in part because the intended uses that you have, have been going on in the property for years, is that right?
Yes.
And by seeking this conditional use permit, you are essentially trying to bring in what was a, uh, legal nonconforming use into a conforming use according to what we, what the City Council passes as an amendment, as a text amendment to the zoning code?
Absolutely.
Why are you looking to invest in downtown?
You know, Dustin and I are very, uh, much invested in the redevelopment of downtown area, uh, we're very excited, we love the historic nature, um, because the city just has a lot to offer that you can't find anywhere else, um, so, it's, it's our intention to take part and do more part in this revitalization.
Who is Dustin?
Dusty Quo, uh, owner of Duncan Homes.
And is it important to be able to bring mixed uses in buildings as part of that revitalization effort?
Absolutely.
But why isn't it?
Just believe it, uh, provides more dynamic, it, uh, allows for tenants to be in the area, uh, to visit our businesses in the area, just to keep the community rolling.
So, the residential supply feeds the commercial demand?
Absolutely.
Now, have you met with the, with city officials about, uh, your application and plans for the building?
No.
Have you met with city officials about the general plans for revitalization downtown?
Yes.
Is it your, uh, understanding that mixed-use properties are part of the city's goals in trying to revitalize particular?
Very much so.
And, this property is west of the tracks, what might, you know, east of the tracks might be generally known as what is the core downtown, this property is located a little bit west of those tracks?
It is.
So, in a sense, it is trying to expand a footprint of downtown?
Absolutely.
Which, in your view, is a good thing for the, this community and your own property?
Very much so.
Um, with respect to the amendment that you just took a look at, uh, in terms of the text amendment to allowing residential use on the second floor of C1 and C2, uh, there are a few requirements that, that do pertain to any conditional use that would be granted, including that- requirements that do pertain to any conditional use that will be granted, including that the units would be more than 600 square feet. Is it true that all of the units, all five of the units within the building at 257 Southwest are at least 775 square feet?
They are.
And there is separate access to each of those residential units?
There is, from the ground.
I think that's all that we have. I can testify just based on our own research that this building was built in 1920. It has been used for both mixed uses, residential and commercial, commercial on the first floor, residential on the second floor, since at least the 1960s. That's based upon discussions with the current owner, who owned the property since then. It's been given permits by the city a number of different times to allow for city residential use on the top floor, excuse me, residential use on the second floor, based on various issues that have occurred from time to time. We have a letter from the city recognizing that there is residential use up on the second floor. That letter is dated 2001. So this is a, this is a use that has been going on for a number of different years, for many, many decades. It is, we're trying now to bring into compliance according to the text amendment that you recommended. And we think there are other properties like this. So this is one of many that could be coming before the council, we think is an appropriate use.
Dave, could you address parking real quick?
Yeah. So it's our understanding that this location is within the special downtown parking district, which provides particular, excuse me, provides for particular requirements necessary for parking. That's, that's within the packet that I believe you've been provided as to what the downtown parking exempt district requires. That's on page 14 of your packet. So with this, non-residential uses located within the downtown are not required to provide off-street onto-site parking. Residential uses within the downtown are required to provide a minimum of one parking space per unit, irrespective of the number of veterans per unit. Mr. Wateki, could you describe if there is any space available for parking on the site, on the parcel hotel?
There is. There's space behind the building off the alley.
Could you give a rough estimate of how many you think might be available in that location?
Well, I would think you could get at least a dozen cars back there.
And based on the calculation in this downtown parking exempt district formula, there would be required of a minimum of five units. Is that right? And do you think that you would be able to accommodate putting five units that are dedicated for residential use in the back?
Yes.
I have a question about the parking. It appears that... So there's a little delineation between the business next door and the parking for your building. Who owns what portion of that? And also, it looked to me when I looked at it today, like the parking's pretty rough there. There's a lot of big dirt hills that would be, you know, make it very difficult to park right next to the building. But there doesn't seem to be any, you know, like delineated parking spaces anywhere. So who, do you own any of that parking lot? If so, how much? And how will you pave it?
So are you, are you referring to the parking lot that is south of the building?
Yes, south.
So that, that is not part of the parcel that we're seeking for a change? That's owned by the, where Five Star Wings is? That's, that's one parcel?
None of the parking along the south edge of the building, none of that area belongs to you?
So none of it belongs to the current owner? No, and that's, and that is not the area where Mr. Wateki was speaking about, in terms of where there might be parking available? The parking that would be available is in the back of the building, west of the primary structure.
Okay. And is that paved? I don't remember seeing if that is paved.
Just for clarity, I'm showing the map, you know, this is your map. Is this the area that the black that's, we're talking about is the parking area?
Off the alley.
In the packet? Black area right here. It's shown, right there.
I was wondering too, if you could tell me something about the rental licenses? Are there rental licenses attached to the occupied units now?
I can speak to that. There are rental licenses for the property. They were applied for last year with COVID. However, the city has not been doing rental inspections. I believe that those start again, if I can check my email and double-check, but I believe that those start again in April. So the fees and everything had been paid for the last year, but they have not been inspected due to COVID. And I, and I believe the inspection is scheduled for April again, with my clients that are the current owners.
But there will be... An inspection and it'll be fully up to code?
Correct. And it has been every other year. It just, they weren't doing inspections with COVID.
And it would be Duncan Homes' intention to make sure that they have the rental license in place. We didn't mention previously, but Duncan Homes has experience in a number of different rental properties in the community in Kankakee. They're familiar with the rental licensing process, so they would be able to quickly move to make sure that that license is in place.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman, could you tell us what the minimum apartment square footage is as a requirement for the ordinance increase?
I will have to check unless, Dave, do you know offhand?
Under what's been recommended as the text amendment, it's 600 square feet.
Yeah. I think, I think it might be 800 in the current code. Does that sound right, Joe?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I think that's right.
So my understanding is for C3, it's listed as 800, but the C2 and C1, it is at least what's been presented, 700 or 600. So here, where we are at C2, it's kind of a, a little bit of a regularity, but the, the units within the building would fall under what's been recommended to go before the council.
Yeah.
The reason that I'm bringing it up is that if we have to trust a shortage of square footage, not probably at the time.
Agreed. It is. And just to clarify, I intentionally proposed dropping it from that 800 after talking to numerous developers of these types of developments and what's getting constructed these days. 800 seemed high as a, as a minimum. Certainly, some of the units will be much larger than that in some of the developments potentially, right? But as a minimum, I thought 800 was too high, so I proposed dropping it to 600.
Is it free to take action on that square footage portion in what we're doing now?
We already did it.
You already kind of did it. But if you have a concern with it, then we can, maybe somebody could, you potentially could amend it if there was a concern, but otherwise you've approved it 600.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners?
I have another question. The separate entrances for the residential units, I see doors on the bottom floor. Do those have stairways?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
I've got a question also. So how big are the units? I mean, how, how many bedrooms and bathrooms and, you know, the layout? Can you describe it?
So my, my understanding is that they're all one bedroom, one bathroom. And Eric, I think he'll be able to speak to this as well, but two of the units were recently rehabbed and got into bringing in some fairly nice luxury style. The other three have fewer of those amenities, but I, from what I understand, Duncan Homes is looking at potentially bringing up to the same level of amenities to the other three units that exist. I believe that four of the units are 775 square feet. I think that the fifth is 900 square feet. So that, just to give you a sense of the difference.
Barry, there was a fire in August of 2016, and that's why two of those units have been more remodeled. Everything was done with building code and everything with the city of Kankakee. When those were remodeled, some of those were rebuilt back and remodeled and such. So there are two units that are quite new.
Yeah, Barry as well. Those two units have been remodeled. They have a more higher-end feel to them. Exposed ceilings, exposed duckboard. I believe it was a Carlisle move, and Mantino is the guys that designed those. And it's our intention as those other units come available to remodel in a like fashion, just to attract higher tenants in there.
Do all the units have secondary exits to the west?
Yes.
Individually?
I believe so.
So it's my understanding that, you know, because, just based on the fact that the units are up to code, they have the permitted ingress and egress, would be required, so we, I do think that they would have the front-end access.
Any other comments?
No. I'd just like to reiterate what Mr. Barron said. My clients have owned this building since 1968, and it has had residential units on the second floor the entire time that they've owned it. So presumably even further back than 1968. It is a legal non-conforming use. They have had tenants in it. They've, they've gone through the different, you know, building code with the city. They've gone through the rental licenses with the city, all that. They have been doing it and keeping these units up over the many decades. So by doing what Mr. Barron and his clients have had to do with purchasing the building is really just keeping it in the fashion that, that it has been used in, and allowing it to move from a legal non-conforming use to a legal use that would allow them to do anything and everything that they need to do, including rebuilding it if necessary, if there was any destruction to the property. So my clients are full support of this.
So right now Duncan Homes is purchasing it from Logins, is it a straight-up contact?
Correct.
Or is it a deed?
It is a straight purchase.
Were any other comments? Want to close the comments, Scott?
You might want to just double-check, make sure there's nobody in the audience that wants to...
Are there any other comments from anyone in the audience on this topic? Any other comments? Are you ready to move?
I am. In PSDB 2021-2-2B, a request by Duncan Homes for conditional use to allow residential use on the second floor at 257 Southwest Avenue, I would like to propose that we recommend the approval because the property is appropriately zoned, it's suitable for the proposed use, it's consistent with development trends in the area, it's consistent with our comprehensive plan, and it would not prohibit the enjoyment of intended use by name and property.
One second. More comments, please?
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Victor Navarez.
Yes.
Beverly Hood.
Yes.
Chip Roeram.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Loretta Cowling.
Yes.
All right. That is recommended for approval to the City Council as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next case is case 2021-2-3A, a request by Joe Thomas for an additional use permit to operate a banquet hall at 1060 Eastern Burke Street. Your representative for this case, from the audience that would like to speak with him?
Come on up to the microphone, and then if you would, raise your hand and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you want, go ahead and state your name.
Hi, my name is Joe Thomas.
Excuse me. This is Loretta Cowling. Before we proceed, are we confident that adequate notice has been given so that we can hold public hearing?
So she's asking if adequate notice has been given to conduct the public hearing. I provided a, a comment in here that there's actually two things that's being applied for here. A conditional use for a banquet hall on the, on the property noted. And then there's a proposal to do parking on an adjacent lot, kind of kitty corner from the, the existing site. That lot is zoned residential. You can do parking on a lot in a residential district, but it also requires a conditional use. That property wasn't included in the original notice. And the other problem, which to me is the bigger problem, was the notice in the paper didn't get put in until, I think, four days after it was supposed to be in the paper. So from staff's perspective, I think there are people here. I think there's testimony to be had, so you might open the public hearing and begin it. I would be really hesitant to conclude it and act since the notice wasn't done correctly.
Are you comfortable with that?
I'm fine with going ahead with the testimony today.
Because there's a good probability that we'll have to table it, you know, to come back one more time. Because of the dates of the requirements not being...
Okay. This is something I did speak with Mr. Hoffman about before we proceeded.
It is. It is. We talked about the, the notice in the paper. I had asked that, that I see the notices before they were sent, and they were sent before I saw them. We, we did talk about the fact that the publication should have been in the paper by March 6th. You said it was going to be in the paper by Monday. I said that would probably be okay. Didn't actually get in the paper till Wednesday. So it was after what I was assuming was going to happen.
Well, I did not know that they were not going to put it in until Wednesday. I called all Friday and Saturday for the people at the Daily Journal.
I understand. That's why we recommend getting notice in early in advance, because that does happen sometimes. But it doesn't change the requirement and the ordinance of 10 days' notice, so.
Furthermore, this isn't necessarily an end of thing, it's a delay, but it's not a...
Okay. I'm fine with that.
So how was that?
Well, it is a building that's been in Kankakee for a long time now, and it's been sitting in the neighborhood. And so when I saw that it was up for sale, I purchased it, and I plan to use it for several events in the neighborhood for the community. One being when I have events with my parents at the daycare. We don't always have enough space for the moms and grandparents and everybody to come out to see the kids perform. I've rented out spaces all through Kankakee, as well as even used my own church for their little performances. And I thought, you know, I really could use a space of my own to do this. And so when I saw that building was available, that's when I came up with that idea.
Questions?
Was there a sketch provided to show how the parking would be handled?
Not yet. Maybe she has one now.
No, I do not have a sketch.
Ms. Thomas, would you be willing to send this out to people to have handles?
If they would like to host an event there, we would like to be able to rent that space out.
I noticed the sign above the door in the north side of the building, it said Legacy or Legacy.
Legacy Banquet Hall, yes, ma'am.
Is that what it was last used for?
It was used for a bar.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. It used to be called Show and Tell. Yeah, Harlem's Night and all of that. So it's been here for quite some time.
There's still a bar, isn't there?
There is no bar in there.
I, I mean, the structure of the...
There is no structure of that bar. No.
Yeah, I remember going back to column number two.
So the parking that you're suggesting across the street?
Yes, ma'am.
If you do own that property as well?
Yes, I do, because I used to live in that area, and I know they used to park in the alley, and they used to park on the grass. And sometimes the people would get told. And I said, well, if I get that building, I know we're going to need some more space for parking. And that's why I purchased that. And that's why I purchased that vacant lot. Mm-hmm.
Are you planning to aid it?
Yes, ma'am. That's one of the requirements of the city.
And just so everybody's clear, it's not the property directly north that she owns, it's kind of kitty corner.
Yes, it's west.
Yeah.
On your side, yeah.
Yeah.
Has anybody told you how many spaces you'll probably need?
Well, I spoke with Mr. Hoffman, and he's considering, well, he gave me a proposal of about 15 spaces. So we do have some space behind the building as well that we could probably use. And there is no one else on that lot in front of the building, so I would think that we would still be able to use the street parking as well.
It's usable, but it doesn't count.
I understand that.
So going back to the west, would all of that be used as parking?
As long as me and my neighbor, which is here tonight, if we have to, we will. But we don't want to disturb them. Do you understand what I'm saying? We don't want to disturb them when we're having events.
I don't know if we're going to have a patio or something like that.
There is space in the back again for a patio and parking, right behind the building.
You'll have requirements for restrooms and various other things that go along with this subway occupancy. Have you investigated any of that yet?
We've had an architect come before we got started. Mr. Jarvis has worked with the city several times. We do have blueprints already made, and we've done a lot of remodeling already, and met with coal enforcement and things like that. You're welcome.
Do you have any other comments, ma'am?
Well, I do have some people here that may want to speak. But I also wanted to add in that it's not just for celebrations. It's for any educational programs that we're working on. We have quite a few people that I work with throughout the community, so it's like people that need their GED, they're not able to always make it to that class, so we can host that. We have health and fitness awareness in the community that's going on, so we do offer exercise classes there. Other people like myself that's in business, we want to host different events where we talk about entrepreneurship and being positive role models in the community. So those are some of the other things that we're looking to do at that space, not just for celebrations. Okay?
Do you know what the occupancy is?
We have not received that amount yet, but according to the architectural designs, the number that he gave us was 133.
Ms. Thomas, have you spoken with your aldermen about this? Are they on board?
In the beginning, yes, they were. I have not spoken to them in a while.
Who are they?
Ms. Malone, Marshall, and Mr. Peroud.
Just for the record, I did send them copies of the application and the information in your packet tonight, so they're aware of it. I have not heard individually from either one of them about it, so.
What kind of experience do you have running a place like that?
What kind of experience do I have running an event hall? Well, I own and operate a childcare facility.
I don't think that's relevant. I don't think you need to answer that. We're here to decide whether the property is suitable for use, not whether it is suitable to run a banquet hall.
Okay.
Would you like to introduce other people to speak to this case from the audience?
I would. Leah Love and Mr. Robert Ellington Snipes.
So we'll just do this as a group real quick. Anyone wanting to speak, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand and saying, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth? Thanks. So when you come up to the microphone, if you could state your name, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Hi, everybody. My name is Leah Love. I am the owner of A Tough Love LLC. I am a teacher as well. I teach preschool. However, my business is to motivate women to get fit and just have a better, healthy life. And I'm using her building to host maybe five to 10 ladies, come out and get fit, get motivated, because our community really needs that. We don't get it much, but I am here to motivate people to come to her building and get fit together. Not only I want to do fitness programs, I want to do more with the community far as maybe CPR classes, where they can be comfortable and don't have to go to KCC or anything. They can come right in their community, down the street, and just feel comfortable with seeing people that they know, concealed carrier maybe, just thinking outside of box. Networking events for small business owners in Kankakee where we probably don't get invited to other places, but we can be free and experience, you know, networking events together. So, that's it.
Good morning to, I'm going to have to talk a good morning until I have a day, but a good evening to the members of the, I guess, the Planning and Zoning Committee, is this what this is? Certainly, I see some familiar faces in the place. I got involved because one.
Mr. Snipe, would you say your name just for the record?
Robert Ellington Snipes. Sir on the Kankakee County Board here, also serves on the Kankakee Housing Authority, and the current president of Kankakee County Community Services, and et cetera, et cetera, and et cetera. I got involved because I'm also a minister in the area, wherever, and Joy Ethel is a member of our church, and the pastor brought to my attention that she was trying to open up a facility, and that there were some hurdles that had to be crossed, so I became involved and got involved with the coal department. Their planning department contacted, the mayor contacted the respective council members of the first ward, and there were some myths and some other things that were stated, but I told her for the purpose of this property, as I told, shared with Joy Ethel, that, you know, I see it as being a positive for the community. If I'm changing it to a bar, to a banquet facility, is one. Not that I despise a lot of bars, but I am not one to drink, but I don't, I'm not prejudiced against folks that do drink. You know, it's just that I think that there, we need to do something more than just bars. We need to have an activity setting where people can come to for repasses when a loved one passed away. We don't have enough in the area to basically accommodate. We need a place for kids to go. As you know, if you lived here any time, when I was coming up, there was many places to go. We had two skating rinks that might date my age, but it, we did, whatever, we had, we just had places to go. When I came up, we had a drive-in. That's probably pretty historic now. But the kids really don't have a lot to do, and if we don't engage them, then you will incur the activities that you have on the streets, so I applaud. And I will support anyone that is going, especially minorities that are going into an area where they want to do something positive. That doesn't mean that you won't have a negative. In our schools, we, as much as we try to keep fights away, and think we did a great job, you cannot always think what people won't do and find out later that they will do. This has to have mechanisms in place. But for this particular purpose, it does another positive, adds another positive. We have a lot of slumming blight in this, in this city that we need to clean up. And one of the things that this does is it puts this property back on the tax rolls, because it was on the county rolls at the time, wherever. So the city receives no tax or anything from there. Now it puts it back on the county road. If a person's trying to upgrade it, and I went in it, I've been in it, and I saw it, I do know Jeff Jarvis, know him well. So I looked at the plan, so I think she's doing a lot of the right things. And some of the hurdles that she had to basically deal with, you won't know until you jump into the race. As far as knowing that there's codes and things, you won't know that until you start getting there. And fortunately, they're there to protect us, but at the same time, we need to make sure that they don't harm us in that it prevents things that are positive to come forth. So I come forth because I looked at what she did when she first started out in her, with her, about to say nursing home, but I'm talking, not the nursing home, but the, working with the kid, the daycare centers. So it's positive. She's been in that business for 20 years. She's employed individuals in that 20 years. So I think it's a step in the right direction, and I would encourage you all, as far as that's concerned, to consider that. I do have some concerns when they dealt with the parking, because all along the way, when Show and Tell was there, when Harlem Inn was there, there was no restrictions to all these parks that there was. It must have either been ignored, but in this case, she's being made to have to put in pay. That takes time. So I don't know why there's a special use permit. I can understand a conditional use permit, because it was already zone commercial, so, and it was always used for a specific purpose. So I don't know why that has changed. Condition, conditional permits allows us to put in certain conditions, and then we have a timeline where they can meet them and they can open for business and things of the nature. But when it went to a special use, it's saying, we needed to do something that is never done. Folks have sat up in there. The only difference is, instead of eating there, I mean, instead of drinking, they're eating. So I kind of have some concerns there, but if you are willing to work with us, since a lot has been invested, and certainly aesthetically, the beginning has changed a little, kind of a lot in the front. And then also, she's moving in the right direction. I just believe that we need to help, especially minority businesses, wherever, that they're not being drained so much of their pocketbook that they're not getting any type of investment back for that. That's all I have to say. If someone has questions for me.
Just to clarify, it is a conditional use that's being requested, not a special use?
I was told it was special. That's why I said there's a difference. I don't know what.
People use the terms interchangeably, but here in Kankakee, it is a conditional use.
No, okay. Hopefully, with me, it's more specific, because when we deal with it at the county level, special use permit is something else. Conditional is something else. Variance is something else. But I guess for the layman term, it's interchangeable. That's fine. Anything else? Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah?
Is it fair to say that the conditional use permit is required for a banquet hall to be able to operate as a private residential establishment? Number of people, like the number of people that can be in the building is larger for a banquet hall? The capacity?
That is absolutely true. The real reason it's different is that it's a different type of use of the structure, right? So we treat each use individually.
But it would be a larger capacity of occupants allowed for a banquet hall, and thusly, the parking would have to be increased.
Yeah. Actually, we don't have a specific requirement for banquet halls listed in the code, okay? We do have a provision for restaurants and bars. That's 10 spaces per thousand. What I did was I went and looked at other codes and industry standards from the Black and Planning Association and such, and that's where I came up with the five spaces per thousand that we're recommending. So it is actually less than a restaurant would require.
Okay. I guess what I'm saying is, like, the fire department might have a different capacity for a banquet hall than they would for a restaurant?
Absolutely.
Okay. So when I say us, I mean the fire department too?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Lori Velma Davis, and I live behind her building. The concerns that my family has would be, I think we need to get a survey to see exactly where her property line ends and begins. Right behind it is two properties. One is 579, one is 569. 579 is an empty lot that we use for parking, for our parking, and 579 we live in at home. We also want to know about the hours of operations, even though it's a banquet hall and not a bar. We wondered about liquor license. Would she be able to get a liquor license? And I think our concern is really, because in this day and age, people are different. It's a lot more chaotic things going on, and we just want to make sure that we're safe. Our window faces that, our bedroom window faces that parking lot, that, behind of the building. We are concerned also about parking, as well as adequate lighting in the back. Security, if she's going to be open later, we would like to make sure we have some security that she provides, and then cameras in the rear. We have cameras on that, on the backside, on each side of our home, but it only goes so far. And then if some people from her establishment are in the back, and they don't know it, we, our camera won't see that, but hers would. And we've talked about it, so I think we, I hope we can get some of this resolved before she really opens and gets going.
So Ms. Davis, just so I, I'm understanding, I think I do, your property is south of this, around Hobby?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes. And it's, I own both. One is just an empty lot, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who are you?
I'm 569.
This is the property.
Big question.
Is it the apartment that she's talking about?
Yes. Right here is our property. That's, what you see is ground. That's, that's ground. We have our parking, and then this is a home.
This is your home?
Yeah. And then on this side, it was at one time Dell Automotive, no Dell, Dell parking lot. Next to the road.
So this is your apartment?
Yes.
So for the record, she's talking about Penn's number 1609-33302-007 and 008. Just for everybody.
Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you.
Is it true that what we decide on the conditional use permit, whether or not the property is suitable for a conditional use permit for a banquet hall, won't have any bearing on whether or not she can get a liquor license or her hours of operation?
Well, liquor license, that's correct. That's really kind of the liquor commissioner, which is the mayor, and her decision on that part. The hours of operation would be a reasonable condition to attach to it if you felt appropriate to attach that type of condition to the application.
So we could attach a condition about hours of operation, a lighting, probably not cameras?
No, I think you probably could if you thought that was important.
Really?
Sure.
All right.
Security and safety. But you're trying to protect the public health, wealth, and safety, and if that would help, then it would be relevant.
I have one more thing to add. To enter our parking area, you would either have to enter through the front or the back area going north and south is an alley, considering the alleyway. So you would have to go there and then turn into our lot. So I didn't know if that needed.
So are you suggesting that she will be able to have her customers or?
In my opinion, I don't see how much, that's why we need to get a survey. I mean, she needs to get a survey done so we can see, I know where it's at, but I don't think she's, she's, sure, sure, where it ends.
Did you have a survey done, or did you talk to you?
No, ma'am.
No?
No, there was no survey done. I bought this property from the auction, from the tax auction. And me and Ms. Davis.
of course, her side, she doesn't need my permission, but they have always, the person that owned the bar previously was her father-in-law. He has since passed away. So that bar has always been there. They've lived there, and as a matter of fact, I took care of her daughter in preschool. So, like I said before-
Now, that law of use, can I say that's a baby lot that you own?
Yes.
Is that law of use to just be a lawn that, that I saw maybe a half dozen cars parked on?
Mm-hmm.
Is that legal parking?
Well, it's on gravel. It's not on any grass.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
If they're operable, I think it's fine.
And they are, because my husband does lawn care and snow, plowing snow and stuff, as well as worked at Valspar. So yes, we've already checked into that. Now, the portion Ms. Jo was talking about is not gravel.
That's the grass part to my side of the building. So if we had to use that backspace, then that would be an option that me and her, we have already discussed as far as having that paved and things like that, and the additional lining. So we're not done. It's just that I need to see where, what's going to happen with this process before I continue to invest more and more of the money and time into.
Ms. Thomas, do you have some thoughts on the hours of, of what you would like to operate?
Well, we'd like to stay within the city ordinance. Most of our events have been for children, repasses, and things that'll, that'll end about eight or nine o'clock. We have had people that's interested in having other celebrations that'll last until two o'clock in the morning. And that's something that we have already discussed.
And that's why we said-
We would not go any further behind that because that's, again, according to the city ordinance.
And that's where it came into the concern of having security. If it's going to be to two o'clock in the morning, because there was a shooting around the corner from us in the middle of the night. So I, I would prefer to have security if you're going, if the building's going to be open much later, I mean, you know, to that time.
Everyone wants to be safe. I just want to include that. Everyone wants to be safe. I don't want to be hurt. I don't want any of my neighbors hurt. But there are shootings that happen in the daytime as well as night. So we can't just, I don't want to, you know, be, I don't want to battle with anybody, but I just want everybody to be aware that you can get hurt at any time of the day or die. But I am concerned, and I would not want to put anybody in a situation where their life would be in jeopardy.
We want you to be safe, too.
Yeah.
I live on the far west side, and I've heard gunfire, too.
Yeah.
It's everywhere.
Me, too.
Do we know what the capacity is for a banquet hall of that particular square foot?
Well, she mentioned her architect estimated 133, I think you said. That sounds reasonable, given the size of the building. Obviously, the fire marshal will actually determine what that is, but that's a good enough estimate.
You know, look at it different ways. There is one site in the code that says for flexible seating, table and chairs, you need 15 square feet per person for options. If you can assume, or if you can provide a 44-inch wide exit path to the proper exits, and you have enough exits, you can make it tighter, but you have to prove it. Sometimes it's proven with fixed seating that will allow you to get down to, say, 15 to 12. But that has to be proven, and that's part of something that's going to have to have a true code at this point. Can there be a picture of that?
Mr. Phil from Code has also been in, and he gave roughly around the same estimate. He said 132, so I figured that would probably be-
Pretty close.
Close enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any comments in the audience?
I guess I have one other question. You mentioned when we talked on the phone, you may in the future want to do some outdoor space for a patio or something like that, which is fine. I guess in terms of the fact that this is in a neighborhood district, would you be having any music or outside speakers or anything that might-
If we do use the music for outside, it'll be at a volume that's not disturbing to the other people in the area. And then if music is used on the outside, it'll have to end by 10:00 P.M. Because I, too, work early in the morning, so I know I want, I need quiet when it's time to go to bed, so.
I have a question on, of you, Mr. Hoffman. You know, we have two cases here. One's a request for conditional use to operate the banquet hall, and then the next one's a request for conditional use to allow off-site parking. Does, is this something that we, Almond, do have to sequence, or can we just pass it?
So your parking recode requires parking onsite, but it has an option to allow for an offsite within, I think it's 100 feet. This clearly, the site that she's talking about clearly is within 100 feet, so that complies. There's no way that she can get 15 parking spaces on the banquet hall site. So that's why she acquired the other property, and she's aware of that and wants to do it. The complication is that to do it on the lot, she wants to do it because it's zoned residential, that requires a separate conditional use. So I would say it should probably be, obviously, if you're, if you're going to vote no on the banquet hall, then the other is a moot point with the parking, right? But if you're going to vote yes on the banquet hall, I would suggest two separate motions, one on the banquet hall, and then make that condition on acceptance of the parking on the adjacent lot, and then vote on that adjacent lot.
My next question is, with respect to compliance with requirements for your presence here this evening and motion on, on this activity, is there any way other than table the motion at this time and reschedule it for hearing, probably a briefing, because we've heard it, give a briefing in the next month?
Well, it would be staff's recommendation that that's what we should do, is continue it to the next meeting because the notification in the newspaper was late and it didn't include the reference to the offsite parking. I mean, in theory, you know, she could do the offsite parking separately later, I suppose, but even then, the banquet notice in the paper didn't get covered. So my thought is let's cover it all at one time, the next meeting, next month, and, and cover it that way. I would suggest to you that if you want her to come back with any additional information or you have any other concerns, it'd be great to express that right now so she's prepared to make sure that everything is properly addressed and can be taken care of at the next meeting.
So, meeting at this point?
I have a question. So if we do not vote tonight and we have to reschedule this, is there going to be any more fees?
No.
Because I've already paid a lot of money.
There's no additional fee. Well, we should correct the notice in the newspaper and get that fixed. I will eat the cost for you if you want to. If there was any communication error between us, I will take care of that. But we will need to republish in the paper to make sure that the notice is correct.
Thank you.
So you had mentioned something about, you had a request for 2:00 a.m. or still for 2:00 a.m.? Is that on weekends or something?
Well, I think it would be up to, isn't it 2:00 a.m. for any day of the week?
For you-
For the city ordinance? Well, for outside, for outside, if there was something being hosted on the outside, 10:00 P.M. would be the desired time that I would like to end that event. But for the inside, if someone is needing that space and providing, you know, their security and everybody's going to be safe for 2:00 a.m., I would like for it to be set at that. But not me. I'm going to be asleep.
Okay.
Would help me if you could provide us copies of Mr. Jarvis's documents or the papers before we do that?
I can do that. You're welcome. I think a survey would be very helpful. Okay.
Do you want a sketch prepared to show how the parking is going to be handled?
The kids can help me with that. Okay.
So, will we have a motion?
So the motion should be to continue this case to your next meeting, so that way all the testimony doesn't have to be repeated or anything else. We just kind of go on from here.
On the motion that you're taking, we have to, if you're, if you're ready, we can get the next, problem for the call.
I'll second that. Is there a vote?
Yeah. One's fine for this. Absolutely. Okay. Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Chip Roan?
Yes.
Victor Navarez?
Yes.
Beverly Hood?
Yes.
Loretta Cowling?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Okay. We will see you again next month. I would suggest if any material you get, get to me, and I can distribute it to the commission. If you need help or thoughts on the sketch, let me know. We can probably help you with that as well.
Okay. And what's the date?
It would be the third Tuesday of April. Anybody got a calendar handy?
The 20th.
20th, April 20th.
That's a long time from now.
Well, the only other option is to schedule a special meeting if you guys want to do that.
My rant is here is not giving someone who is close to you an opportunity to have a conditional cut to allow it to be extended. It's an exasperation.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't want anybody coming back suing you and saying that we have a problem with the station.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
Do we have any other business?
So just a heads up, we probably will have some additional cases next month, and I think, if you guys are comfortable with it, I'd like to start that process we've been talking about for a year now, about going back and rezoning some property to be consistent with the existing use. I think now that we are actually meeting in person again, that we can do that, I think we should do it on a limited basis initially, maybe 10, 20 properties, something like that. But let's get it going, if that's okay with you guys. We will plan to do that. All right.
This is Loretta. After we're officially adjourned, there's something I'd like to sound out with you, if it's convenient.
Sure.
So, I don't hear what she's saying.
She, she would like to chat for a second after me.
So, if there's no further to make, you can be on her.
All right. Give me one, give me one second. We-
Okay.